We also raised the question, when the regional staff did present this, they said that the money would be raised through the regional tax levy. So what staff's position was is that you can't send us a bill, we're not going to pay it, you have to do it through a regional tax levy. And as a result, there was a position paper from their staff that said, yes, that's how it should be, and so for 2009, the region will continue this service, but they will be paying it for themselves. So that comes off the bottom line there. So now it leaves us with the 698 to 418. So, how can we deal with that number of 698? So here are the options available: use of reserve funds, further reduction in expenses, or a tax levy increase. So number one, use of reserve funds. Again, several weeks ago at community services, there was a discussion regarding the provincial gas tax, where staff proposed using only 292, 392 in reserve money, where previously it was 532,000. Again, there was some confusion from staff on what that money could be used for because of what went on at the regional level with Niagara Specialized Transit. After further review, as a result of some questions here at, in council, staff determined that, yes, indeed, we could use those dollars for operations. So therefore, staff is recommending that we increase the use of the provincial gas tax for transit back up to $532,000, go back up to the 2007 and 2008 levels. As a result, that leaves a balance now of $458,810. So, further reduction in expenses. And staff have come up with the, some proposed reductions here, that will, that can achieve that 458 reduction. We talk about reducing contribution to fire, that had to deal with a couple of items that are ongoing, training grounds, do that reduction. All we're talking about there is reducing the additional spending. There is some dollars there in that capital account from previous years that are unspent, so all we're doing is reducing the level of expenditure, not eliminating it. Reduction in contribution to roads, that could either be a combination of asphalt overlay or surface treatment, or one of, of either one, take it all out of asphalt overlay or out of surface treatment. I think if council does go in a way of reducing that expenditure, they should leave it to staff as to where that 78,000 will come out of it. Is it a combination of both, or should it come out of, out of all, out of one fund? And that'll be dependent on, on the program that they have to do this year. So we would ask council to simply, if they go with the reduction to target the 78,000 and leave it up to staff as to, under the two programs where the money would come out of, to best meet the, the needs of the infrastructure out there. On that point? No, sorry. There's also some discussion about new sidewalks, there's $125,000, that was earmarked for this year, we're talking about eliminating that. But once again, if, when you look at your capital sheets, there is some money, I think about 72,000 left from '08 that was unspent. We could still use that money to complete some of those missing link sidewalks. Again, those are for sidewalks where the links aren't there, and it's, and it's not going to be included in part of any other construction project. So it could be on Stanley Avenue, and I forget where we, or in Portage Road where we have some missing links, and we don't intend to doing any roadwork in that area. I know there was a question that was brought up about Cynix Avenue. That project is going ahead, and we've included in there to, as we're reconstructing the road, to finish off a small piece of sidewalk there that's missing. Again, council talked about, several weeks ago, about parks and rec. We've reduced that by $200,000, that's reflected in the capital budget, and a lot of, and so staff came up with a, a program that matched what money they were given, which is approximately about $195,000. So it's, it's just over a 50% reduction there. And then finally, a reduction in capital contribution to libraries, and that had to deal with some washroom retrofits. So adding all that up, you get your 458,810. So that's how staff have come up with council's direction of getting to a 0% tax increase. So I just want to talk about the 0% tax increase and what it really means. Just a little bit about regional and education impacts. Mr. Harrison can provide details on this, I can just give you a brief overview. The region still has to finalize tax policies, including the ratios, and as well as the assessment shifts. There's the ongoing shifts between the residential class, commercial, and industrial class, and Mr. Harrison can provide more information on that if council so wishes. So until that is resolved, we don't know what the final impact will be to taxes. With respect to education, the province did inform us that they're looking for the same dollars in 2009 that they had in 2008. As a result, they're reducing their rate from .00264 to .0025, so to raise the same dollars, because, to recognize that there's been the reassessment that people have experienced, and so they're offsetting that increase to raise the same dollars that they had in 2008. So, what does this mean to homeowners? And you'll see a column there called "notional," and that's what we mean by, this is a true zero in that although the homes have been reassessed, you can see in last year, a home that was assessed at approximately $175,000, because of the phase in of the new reassessment, their home is now valued at 182. So therefore, in order to not take that increase in value that way, the city staff had to reduce the tax rate. And so by reducing the tax rate to zero, you'll see now there's a slight increase from 917 to $922. Again, that relates back to regional tax policy. So that's why there's that little bit of anomaly. Well, it's not really zero, but a lot of it has to do with, again, regional tax policy and how those shifts would occur. What we're also showing is if you go to 1%, what it means, 1.5% and 1.8%. And then we have the total, what that would have raised in additional dollars. So the 1% is just a couple thousand under the 458. So essentially, a 1% tax increase would, would negate any further cutting if council were, were to go that direction. And this is what's gone on in other municipalities, what's been approved, what, in some cases, what they're proposing. We had on here before, we did, there was one other municipality that had zero, that was Markham. But they, they did that through some layoffs and things like that, cutting of some services to get to zero. But you can see, this is what's going on with our neighbors here in, in the region. I think what's interesting is Fort Erie, again, it's a 5.3% increase. Last year, they had a double-digit increase. And I think what's gone on in Fort Erie, they, like we, we are experiencing a revenue problem, where they're realizing less revenues from gaming, and so they've decided to rely less on those revenue dollars, and decided to raise their taxes. So it's, they've had significant increase the last two years in order to deal with their revenue reductions. And I just want to talk about where we're going from now to the future, and I think we presented this to council a few months ago when we talked about what was happening in future years. And, and this goes to where, you know, it's staff's recommendation that we do have a tax increase, be it 1% or 2%. And, and the reason we're saying this is, we're talking about what's going on here, as you can see what's happening to expenses, but what's more alarming is what's happening to our revenues. They're, they're dropping considerably. And just to talk about the revenue side, why there's such a big drop, I mean, you can see there's a drop from, from '08 to '09. Part of that is because of a loss in, in surpluses from years before, which has impacted our revenue line. And if you look, and if you look at total dollars right now, what we're proposing, before you do any additional cuts, we're only talking about a $50,000 increase in expenses of '09 from '08. And this is before you do any additional cuts. So it's effectively, effectively flatlined on the expense side, and you can see that on the graph. Unfortunately, the revenue's going down, it looks like it's going up, but it's pretty well flatlined there. You're only talking about a $50,000 difference. So with the big decrease from '09, '10 in revenues, the big issue is the 3.9 from the province, we will no longer have that, those dollars. There's also been talk of the OMP funding, that's called the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund. The city receives about 3.2 million dollars, I think, and, and it's supposed to be specialized one-time funding that we've been getting for several years now. And, and you get quite addicted to it when that money keeps coming in every year. The province has announced, well, they've announced several times that that money's going to be clawed, is going to be disappearing, but this time they say they mean it. And I think part of, part of the program is, is that they're starting to upload the social services costs from the region, and in return, they're going to decrease, decrease the OMP funding that they're provided. But, I mean, they don't treat us differently from the region, so they're just decreasing the, the partnership funding across Ontario. And it's going to have a significant impact on, on municipalities like ourselves, where we don't, we're not responsible for those social services, it'll just come off the bottom line. And then what we see in, in '10 to '11, a slight increase, and that's because of new assessment. And just on the revenue line, that's just showing as a 0%, so there's no tax increase there. Just say if we, if, you know, our revenue's based on, on today's tax rate, what we know about what's happening with other revenue sources, what we see in new assessment happening, that's where we're at. If you look at the expense side, you know, from 2009 to 2010, we're only forecasting a 2.8% increase. From '10 to '11, it's 4.1%. And a, a big chunk of that is because of the arena debt that we'll be having to pay for in 2011. For instance, in, in '11, the increase from, from 2011, 2010 is 2.95 million, of which 1.8 million is debt payments. So that, that's driving what's going on, expense side from 2010 to 2011. So therefore, when you look at that, to close the gap, if we, if we went to zero this year, you'd be looking at the, the spread between revenues and expenses, you'd have to increase property taxes by 15%. And in 2011, you'd be talking 18.6%. So when staff saw this, we're quite alarmed by that, in trying to close those gaps. And again, that's assuming we just, you know, it's at a 0% on the revenue side in, in 2009, 2009. So we're suggesting to help with our revenue situation. It's not going to be the answer to solving our problem, we'll still have significant issues to deal with in 2010, 2011. We need to start this year and start dealing with our revenues, and, and that's why staff is suggesting that we go ahead with a tax increase. And I just wanted to point out, I know in talking to the mayor, that, you know, our taxes generate just under 50% of our total operating budget, I think it's 49 point something percent, but it, the other half comes from other revenue sources. So that's why, you know, as I said, staff is suggesting that, that we look at a tax increase. So, you know, the two options that are left to you is reduce the capital contribution or increase the tax levy.
Okay. I do have some comments from members of council. I have Councilor Anone, Mayor Salsi, Councilor Diodati, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've been going through this budget binder for ages now. I had called Mr. Dulevik today with what I thought could be proposed cuts to get us down the 458, and I was pleased that he had already had the cuts. As we went through it, it was, they were almost similar. I would have cut more out of the roads. I had looked, they had a budget of, just let me pull this here. It's tab three, page 73. And as I looked at that, I had, in my own head, thought, I would cut that 863 in half, to be honest with you, because they still have 248,207 in reserves, that, that we've already allocated for that. So it really brings them up to, close to 681,000 roughly, I think about there. I'd have cut half that. So I'd have took $400,000 out of that without looking at the other, other expenditures. And I really think we could probably do that and still get away with it this year. But I was really pleased to see the 1, 2, 3, 4, the five areas that they've cut, brings us down to the 0%. And so that we work off a motion, I'd like to move that we reduce the expenses to the capital budget aligned to slide two.
Do they have a motion on the floor?
In our, in our handout.
Ready for the presentation? Seconded? Okay. I have speakers, Mayor Salsi, Councilor Diodati, please. And Councilor Carrion.
Yes, yes. This is what we still have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge staff's efforts in working towards this zero increase budget. I wanted to reconfirm what Mr. Dulevik had said, and in fact, that this is a true zero increase, and that it takes into consideration the actual increase in assessment. So when we heard from the public, when we found that increases were going to take place over the next four years in the assessed value of about 4% a year, the, the true increase to them, the true money out of their pocket at this point is really zero, or within a few cents of zero, if we pass this budget. We've achieved this with no layoffs, obviously, and, obviously with the issue that we have before us, I, I want to acknowledge again the efforts of staff and the, and the council, and that our spending has only increased on a $92 million budget by $52,000, which is just superb. The spending has not gone out of control, it is not out of control by any means, and, and it's very responsible. So as, as Mr. Dulevik points out, less than half the revenue that we achieve to support the $93 million budget comes from taxation, from the public taxpayer. However, the decline is, as he's noted, has come from basically other sources of revenue, and namely, one major source being the province. So I, I know that there's obviously changes there, and we're looking at pursuing those avenues of, of funding support. Whenever we've asked the applicable ministers each time to give us, give us a program that's going to be allowing for our sustainability in terms of predicted revenues, and each time we carry the message, we always bring that to them, whether it be individually or from the association municipalities. We all as mayors and members of council have been asking for predictable, sustainable programs that we can rely on from year to year. And of course, that's changed substantially. So I wanted to acknowledge the, the main points of the fact that our spending in Niagara Falls has been really maintained very well. I don't believe, by the way, for the benefit of some of the press, you didn't have to really bully anybody, did you, Mr. Dulevik?
No.
Did you have to bully the library?
Just staff, that's all. Internal staff.
You didn't bully the library? So it's just, just to show you didn't have to bully anybody?
No.
Just, I want to get that in. So having said that, I'm pleased to second the, the recommendation that we have achieved. I know that next year is a challenge, we're increasing, of course, the value of the assets we have in our community, of course, we have to pay for them. People have asked for the amenities to be provided, and we're doing just that. If you look at the McBain Center, the overwhelming success that that has been, and the amount of activity that's in and about that facility, is proof of the fact that the public, when we provide facilities like that, utilize those facilities. I'm sure the new four pad will be just as active and provide the same type of benefit to our taxpayers. So I think we can be proud as a council to, to do that. So I'm pleased to, to second the, the motion and work towards that, that zero increase.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Diodati?
Mr. Chair, you know, I don't share the, the optimism and excitement of a 0% budget, Mr. Chair, for a lot of reasons. First que, I've got a few questions I'd like to ask to you first, through staff. What's our status this year for reserves? How much money have we put into reserves this year?
Through the chair, I'll, I'll start off, and then I'll let Mr. Burden answer the question, or Mr. Harrison. But I know when we started the, the budget process this year, staff did look to put money into reserves following the, the report that was presented to council, was approved about, you know, reestablishing reserves, increasing the reserve amounts, and we realized quickly we just couldn't do it in this year's climate. So any, any dollars that we were thinking about putting to reserves were not included in this year's budget, and I think, Mr. Harrison could maybe comment on what our status is right now. But just to let you know, there's nothing in this year's budget to tackle the reserve issue that council wanted us to look at.
Just to add, add to that, Mr. Chairman, is that the planned reserves that we had to, that we had originally in the budget had to be drawn back because of last year's deficit that we, that we incurred, and we had to utilize some of our existing reserves to offset some of those areas.
So did we add to reserves this year?
No.
Okay, thank you. My first concern, red flag goes up for me when I see our reserves being depleted and not being replenished. That concerns me. Second question, I'm looking at where things are going to be next year through you, Mr. Chair, and the year after. The way things stand now, with what we know today, you're suggesting that we could be looking at a 15% next year and 18.6 the following year, is that right?
Yeah, through the chair, that, that again is based on a 0%. We took into account some assessment growth, like new assessment happening. We know where we're going to see reductions in revenues, we know what new expenses are going to come online. And so if we stay, if that, if these forecasts that we see today continue on, you know, we're seeing a gap of, you know, we're talking here, let's say in dollars, six, approximately 6.7 million dollars between revenues and expenses. And, and, you know, to make up that, if you were to do it all by property taxes, it would, you'd have to have a 15% increase to close that gap.
So we're looking at, over two years, we're looking at 34%?
Again, you know, in the following year, if, if you, if you had a very slight increase next year, or say you went zero again, then yeah, you're taking, you're looking at that huge gap there. Unless, of course, you just decide, that's, we're cutting expenses. Either you raise revenues or you cut expenses, I mean, those are your options. And, and then on the revenue side, you've got taxes, I mean, that's one vehicle this council has. And the other is, you'd be looking, you know, in other places, and hopefully that there would be some other revenue opportunities. But, you know, could be user fees or those type of things.
Okay. So, next question. Those numbers, that 34%, based on what we know today, have we factored in the Boys and Girls Club commitment and the overpass that we've already talked about? Have we factored that in to those numbers?
No, and I'll be talking a little bit, I'll, I'll be talking about that when I get to the capital budget, but council directed us to go as a pay-as-you-go philosophy. So all we had in the capital budget there is for some projects, some legacy projects that we're finishing off, such as Clifton Hill intersection, there's a few others, when we go through that, I'll, I'll talk about it. But the only, the big items we have right now are the Gale Center and the radio project for, for firefighters. And after that, as you look on in the future years, there's no new debt being taken on. And so when you look at your capital budget binders, under tab eight, these are all projects that, you know, people have indicated that need to be done, however, they're unfunded. So either you displace other projects, or you simply put out the benches. So that's not factored in, into that three-year forecast, any of those type of projects.
So if we want to change the situation, we've got two choices: increase taxes, or we decrease services. So this year, we've had to deal with some pools, we've had to deal with a number of situations, leaf collection, and what we're suggesting is, in the future, we're either going to, unless we get a bailout, handout, which might happen, which might not happen, there are absolutely no guarantees, but unless something like that happens, we have to either raise the taxes considerably or reduce services drastically. Is that fair to say?
Those are our options. Another option that, that staff doesn't recommend is the use of reserves. However, you use that, they'll run out quickly, then what do you do after that? So we don't recommend the, the use of reserves for those ongoing expenses. These are ongoing expenses that this, this council, you know, these programs that council wishes to, to, to do, which citizens out there are asking for. And I think that's the challenge for us, is how do you provide those services that the residents want out there, and yet at the same time try to keep taxes at a reasonable level?
Yeah, well, you know, using up reserves, as we're heading into more challenging times, we haven't even addressed the commitments we've made to the Boys and Girls Club, where we had a train issue, the city was stalled all morning, we received all sorts of very upset people because we don't have overpasses, and we can't, as it stands now, we've got a huge, steep climb just to pay what we have on the books, never mind the things we've promised, that we have no intention of being able to fund, the way things are today. I think the direction we're taking right now, although it seems popular today, I think we're going to pay the price with a lot of interest and a lot of frustration with the taxpayers tomorrow. I think it's short-sighted, I don't think it's addressing the real problems we have, it's like putting our head in the sand, pretending that it doesn't exist. I mean, taking from reserves is like burning the furniture to heat the house, it's not a long-term and sustainable solution, and I'm very, very concerned with the direction that we've got right now. You know, I believe, and it was discussed earlier, that, that planned maintenance is much less expensive than emergency repairs, is that right, Mr. Dulevik? Because my concern here is, you know, we're not doing all the infrastructure that we should be, that we could be, that we know, that we should be looking at. And in this situation here, we're asking a lot of people to give a lot up in return for some pain that's going to happen shortly down the road, including next year and the year after. And fellow councillors, I'm just concerned at going in with, again, like I say, although it's popular, 0%, as opposed to 1%, which is less than a cup of coffee a month to the average homeowner, to maintain what we have. I look around the, the province, and, and other people seem to be preparing more for the inevitable storm. And it just doesn't seem, it seems like it's the Three Little Pigs and we're building a straw house. And it seems to me, this is the time when you want to be prepared for what's about to come. And through you, Mr. Chair, I would just suggest that we need to be a little bit more fiscally responsible, and I think we need to do not necessarily what's popular, but it's right for the city, so we position ourselves to be prepared for what's about to come.
There's a few other projects that you're forgetting as well, there's the Bicentennial Museum, there's also the Main Street Farmers Market, and there's also the improvements in Niagara Transit that council has committed itself to.
So well over $20 million, easily, easily. And, and we haven't even begun to address that. Thank you.
Okay. I do have some other people that wish to speak. I have Councilor Carrion, Councilor Thompson, and I have Councilor Anone and Mayor Salsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we should continue on the path that we set out on. I understand the Councilor Diodati's concerns about next year, but to those things that he mentioned, there's also next year. You know, we got to look at the capital budget again. I looked at the capital budget as Councilor Anone did. I think there's more that we could cut out of the capital budget. Whether we spent 600,000 or 400,000 on the roads, our roads aren't great to begin with. I don't think you'd notice it riding around our town on our roads. We don't have super-duper highways, so continue to scrutinize the giveaways. Let's start again. We did, we did a good job this year. Let's start again on the giveaways. Let's make it tougher for people to come to this council and, and get money from the taxpayers. Let's sell off surplus property. We went through a deal tonight. If we sell off the surplus property before we give it away, we're going to make some money. If we continue to leave that surplus property in our books, the groups come in and take it, and we give it. Eliminate the excess buildings, get rid of some of the buildings that we have that we're not using. We've got the arenas that, that we have come, that are going to become obsolete, we've got to sell them, or develop, you know, sell them to a developer to get some money from those. There's all kinds of ways. We can't just say that this is the end of it, and that next year we're going to have a, you know, a 7 or 8 or 10% increase. We got to keep fighting. In business, it's a fight every day. And, you know, to, to always talk about what it is for the average homeowner, you know, it's only a few dollars. Well, all the taxpayers aren't just the average homeowner. There's some businesses that are already paying too much tax in our town, and we're chasing them out of town. I talk to business owners every day that say they're being taxed to death in this community. We've got to get a handle on our spending. And I think that this council's done a great job in getting a handle on spending, the staff has done a fabulous job, and to increase it by 1%, I think would be just a slap to the staff for all the hard work that they've done. I think that we should stick to our guns, we set out to do a job, let's do the job that we set out to do, and next year we'll dig in deeper, we'll try harder, we'll work together again, and we're going to, we're going to battle it down again. You know, we're not going to pay what we see on that graph. It's nice to say, you know, that's what's on the books, but I think that this council, if it's committed, there's ways and means that we can work together to still tackle the future increases in our community. So I'm glad to support the zero increase, 1%, half a percent, not going to let make that much difference anyway. Let's stick to our guns, and at least people will say this council committed to something, they stuck to it, and we're going to fight again next year to do the best we can to keep the taxes as low as we can next year. Whether we can achieve a 0% next year or not, I'm not sure, but we can this year. The staff showed us how to do it, let's just do it.
Okay, I have Councilor Thompson.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to ask a couple of questions of Mr. Dulevik. I know that the, and I'm not, I think we've done what we have to do this year, but I think next year is a real concern, and 2011 is really going to be a problem as far as I can see. But the province is downloading a lot of the, or uploading some of the services, which are going to take the region off the hook for a substantial amount of dollars, and I read the debate between the regional councillors with respect to where that money should stay at the region, and look after the regional budget, or some of that should accrue to the municipalities. Have you, have you had any indication of where that's going and what's going to happen with that?
Through the chair, I know there's been some discussion, and I think in particular the town of Lincoln has made some presentations on that, where they've written to the province about what's happening with the, the partnership funding, and, and are pursuing the region. There's, you know, they're going to the region, this is going to create room there, that money should somehow flow back to the area municipalities that are going to lose out on that. I know from a regional staff perspective and presentations that they've made, the staff has made to their council, they're looking to use that money to deal with the infrastructure issues that they have, their, their infrastructure deficit, and use that money to, to deal with the problems that they have there at that level. So I mean, that's an ongoing discussion, I mean, it's very much a political discussion about what will happen with, with those savings, you know, will the region use that to spend on capital, will they use that to keep taxes in line? I, I don't know, I mean, that'll be a political decision.
Maybe, maybe there's a, a reason for a resolution from this council to at least share some of the benefits to assist, we know where we stand this year, and we've accomplished, or accomplishing, a zero budget increase, but that doesn't mean we're providing the same services, we're providing the same increase in looking after our sewer and water increase in looking after our sewer and water system, we're cutting back on our sidewalks, all kinds of concerns with respect to that. We had a substantial amount of money set aside as a result of the sale of the property on McLeod and Montrose. Is that still available and how much?
Those, yeah, those dollars are still there through Chair, and I think with the accrued interest, it's, it's $6.1 million or?
$6.7.
Six point seven, sorry. $6.7 million is accrued in that account.
Why wasn't some of that money utilized this year rather than cutting sidewalks and roads and some other things when we get so many complaints about the roads and the potholes and everything else? Anybody calls me, I usually say they're regional roads, but I think we have some problems ourselves.
Based on, through the chair, based on the discussions that staff heard here, the focus was on cutting on expenditure. There wasn't a lot of talk of using those reserves. I know there was some discussion that it was there, but there really wasn't, there was no direction from council in using that. I think what we were told was look at cutting expenditures.
Well, anyway, I don't, I don't have a lot of optimism for the next year as far as increase in assessment. If you talk about any of the hundreds of developments that have been approved through this council, they're all sitting back and wondering where they're going to get the financing. The banks, like the states, have shut down over here, and people who have developments ready to go cannot get financed. It's a serious problem, so I don't think we're going to see a continuation next year with development that has happened up to now. So I think we have a, a really serious problem. Development charges, where do we stand, you know, without the development, where, where do we stand with our development charges now?
There are some funds still left. There will be a discussion on the new DC bylaw. Staff are reviewing a draft background study that talks about where the numbers should go. That will be presented to this, to council, looking for direction before we go up to the stakeholders. But we do have to have the new bylaw in place by July, and we'll get detail, council will be provided details on, on the, on the funds there and what we need in the future.
Okay, I, I understand we have to have a newer bylaw, but how much have we got in reserves in the, in the account for development charges?
Through Chair, I know there's, there's...
Give me approximate, I don't have to have it exact.
Yeah, there's several accounts.
If I can just jump in and help out, I believe the, it's approximately at the end of the year was about $11 million, $12 million in that neighborhood. I don't have the exact numbers in front of you, in front of me, but as you know, development charges are a series of buckets. There's money that's set aside for fire, there's, there's money that's set aside for roads, there's monies that's set aside for transportation.
Unencumbered development charges.
But, but it's all in different pockets, so there is about 11 and a half, $12 million at the end of the year.
Total, okay, thank you. Anyway, my, my only concern is we have a, a really serious problem next year and particularly 2011. And here we are in, in coming up to the middle of April, we're still dealing with our, our budget system. I always prided myself on the fact that we had our budget discussion start in the summertime. By the time we got to the middle of December, we had our budgets approved and a lot of hard work and effort with everybody involved. And there's so many advantages to doing that. And I'm wondering if we can't start early and get our decision made by middle of December. Obviously, you've got people sitting around waiting, whether they're, what the grant allocation is going to be from some of the agencies. You can call tenders and get a preferred rate if you're first out of the box with your budget approved. There's all kinds of advantages. Is there, is there any way we can get back to that next year by starting early?
Through the chair, that's definitely staff's plan. In, in talking to Council Peter Angelo, we've talked about the need to start earlier for the 2010 budget because of the challenges before us and, and addressing the very issues that you're talking about, where we're going to go, what are council's priorities. So we're hoping that, that the operating budget at least will be approved tonight, and then by the end of April, the, the last of the budgets will be approved. I think take a little breather then there and start, start up in June to talk about whatever you want to call it, service delivery review, whatever name you want to give it, but start talking to council about, you know, what are your priorities? What are you prepared to cut in 2010 to deal with the gap we are going to see between revenues and expenses? So it's going to be a much earlier start this year. I think this is more some big picture thinking, where do we want to go? What's, give us some direction so that in September, as we start putting the numbers together, staff has a good idea of this is, this is, this is what council wants to see. And so we can have the numbers earlier in the process as we sit there and start making those tough decisions.
Well, anyway, it's always easy to get up and criticize and make negative comments, but I think the staff have done a great job. And I think that hopefully we can start this really early and get this cleaned up so we know exactly where we stand early in the year. And I think we're going to need it because I think next year has been tough enough this year. I think next year is going to be a real challenge. Unfortunately, there's an election in between because the next year is really going to be a disaster.
Thank you, I have Council Aronony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to cover some comments that Council Diodati raised, when he said that we didn't add to our reserves, there are thousands and thousands and thousands of households that haven't had an increase in pay, who are seniors who do not get the increase that we generally do in a taxes. There are people saying to me, "I'm not getting the increase that you're bringing to us." So not only did we not save more, the households didn't save more either. I think when we started this process, it's been a long road. It seems to me like we've been doing this, these budgets forever. We said we were going to start, we were going to aim for zero. Well, we aimed and we've got there. We've sent staff back. I have to say, I, I didn't think you could find more cuts, and you did. And, and I was really impressed with that. I think what we can't do is give a false impression to the residents that next year, we're going to be able to come in with zero. In debating back, should we do zero, one percent, one and a half percent, I thought this is our one shot in this economy, and with our revenues dwindling, to do zero. And because it's, I, I really don't believe we're going to be able to do zero next year. Not because I'm being a pessimist, I mean, the numbers just don't add up. I do see, see areas where we can tap revenue, like Council Cario added. We have $5.9 million in a reserve fund from property that we sold that we didn't touch this year. And it killed me not to touch it, to have them cut different things and not tap into that account, because I knew we probably would have to tap into it next year. So there are avenues where we are going to be able to augment next year, but I don't want anybody sitting at home not to understand this was really difficult to get to and don't count on it for next year. I don't want anybody to have a false impression that maybe we can carry this zero over because I don't see how we can do it. I think we're really fortunate that we have this one year that we can do it. And I'm really proud that we all put these motions forward to cut, 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 and they went through and we supported each other. So I think we've done a heck of a job.
Okay, thank you. I have Mayor Salsi.
Thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. Again, I just want to reiterate, just to rebut some of Council Diodati's concerns, that as a council, we did give the direction, as you heard, to staff, and, and we are at zero. This isn't the end of the world. We, you know, we know that these times are not going to be with us forever. They are predicting on the positive side that the, the impact, the economic impact we're going through right now, the recession, is going to be a little shorter than anticipated. That was just most recently reported as well. We're talking about one percent basically, which is not a make or break situation for next year at all. I think that we did achieve, and I want to acknowledge staff for that point. Last year, we spent record amounts on infrastructure. We gave the public what they asked for as responsible members of council. We, we surveyed the public, they wanted more roads and sewers and infrastructure. We're trying to eliminate flooding, which we still have a great deal, more to do. However, our reduction of $78,000 in contribution to roads, I think, represents a plus or minus five percent of the total. So we're not veering by 50% or 75%. So there are times when you can spend money, there are times when you can spend money. And this is a time that we made a commitment to the public, understanding the challenges that they have with, and we heard them loud and clear with regard to not wanting to face another increase. The region is dealing with a 0.6% increase subject to the, the police budget, which is yet to be dealt with. But, you know, when you look at it, we, we talk about using 33 cent dollars in Niagara Falls. Out of every dollar, I always suggest that 33 cents stays in the city, 42 cents goes to the region, the other 25 cents goes to the province. And, and I know that varies between classes, but in general, what we have to deal with in our city on municipal tax basis is much less than the region has. And we heard Mr. Dulevik talk about the, the transfers from the government, sorry, the provincial government to the region. We know that the uploading is they are taking on more responsibility for social welfare costs, which we appreciate and we expect they should do. I think they should take more money on transportation costs. We're making every opportunity available that we can to approach both levels of government for additional funding. So I feel optimistic that we can take advantage of those programs next year. Yes, we have some challenges. I'm not going to dwell upon that. We know what those challenges are, but we're improving our asset base, we're expanding the asset base by building a new facility, and of course, we have to pay for it. So again, that challenge will be with us next year, and we'll deal with that at that time. It's certainly well aware to be cognizant of the fact that we have challenges before us. So to give the one percent, to offer that one percent back, I think council has worked hard with staff, council and staff has worked hard as well to, to bring to us a zero percent increase, and I think we should take advantage of that. As I said, the one percent next year, we'll deal with that when it, when it happens and if and when that, that occurs. So I wanted to say that I really appreciate the fact that council has given the direction and staff has responded to that. And, and I think that's what we should take advantage of at this point. People are telling us the recession's upon us now. As I said, I think we anticipate an improvement for later in the year and from what we're told by other levels of government, and I think we should capitalize on that fact. And I'd be proud to, again, support the zero percent increase.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor Fisher and Counselor Maves, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Every one of us, when we went out campaigning, talked about being fiscally responsible. And I think we've done a great job. You realize that, I know you're smiling about something. I realize that all of us have worked hard and staff have worked very, very hard. And we've all talked about the zero, and I am definitely supporting it. And I liked your comments, Counselor Cario, and yours, Counselor Thompson, and I'm definitely supporting zero. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Council Maves.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I also would like to thank staff. I think they did a great job on this. I think years ago, there was a muffler man or a car dealer or something used to say, "Pay me now or pay me later." I think we're in that situation right now with the thing is too, if you don't have any money, you can't pay right now. So I think that we're going to have to bite the bullet and go with a zero increase. And, and I think that perhaps, we expect this recession to end, perhaps maybe next year, we will have a few more dollars to spend. And I think that if we can stave off things right now with the zero increase, I think that's great. And I hope we don't have to touch those millions of dollars next year, but if we have to, we have to. And I think that that's the best thing we do for the taxpayers in this particular environment.
Are there any other members of council? Counsel Wink.
You know what's coming. This has gotten increasingly difficult to do as I've listened to the comments around the table tonight. As your Humane Society representative, I have some bad news to bring forward. When, at an earlier budget meeting, we reduced the $250,000 we had budgeted under animal control services, we reduced too much, far too much. There was a meeting last week, I was there, Humane Society President Dominic Delala, Treasurer Tony DePaulo, Manager Jay DeRoche, and we had from, from city staff, Mr. Dulevik, Mr. Burden, Mr. Beeman. It was to discuss the contract negotiations for a new contract with the Humane Society. And it actually was mostly about the cost of providing animal control services as per the Bandell report, which we adopted in 2007. Right now, the city's paying far less than it should be paying, and the Humane Society is subsidizing the services that the city is contracting it to perform. The reason I'm bringing this information forward tonight instead of having a deputation from the Humane Society come in is that there's definitely going to be an impact on the operating budget, and we needed this information to come forward as quickly as possible. I kind of wish I jumped up at the beginning to bring it forward then. After the, after council adopted the Bandell report, which had recommendations about the shelter, the physical condition, the deficiencies it noted there and the improvements it wanted, the Humane Society responded by correcting those deficiencies. And the improvements were made, depleting the Humane Society's reserves. Now, these same improvements have led to dramatically increased costs. And following the improvements, so this is what our treasurer was able to lay out for us at the meeting last week, utilities costs increased because of the individual ventilation systems for each room, which is something Bandell wanted. So now, utilities costs are about $2,000 a month on average, higher than previously. Wages have increased about 20% over the life of the contract because of the QP agreement. We're still working on the old rates, but the, the rates being used in the contract are six years old. The costs now are up over $7,000 a month over what the contract pays. The sheltering costs and the spay-neuter costs have gone up because of the improvements arising from the Bandell report. Fewer animals are now getting sick, so fewer animals are being euthanized. More animals are being adopted out because they're surviving, and those costs, the sheltering and spay-neuter, are up about $5,000 a month. And finally, there's the depreciation of the $300,000 in physical improvements that the Humane Society made because of what the Bandell report demanded. You know, $300,000 from their reserves were spent, but those do need to be reflected in the contract, and the estimate is that's another $3,000 a month. So altogether, we're up $17,000 a month over what the contract's currently paying. Services cost money. The expectations of the Bandell report and council, because we adopted it, have been met. We wanted better service, the bar was raised, and now we are going to have to pay for it unless we are willing to let the Humane Society go broke, providing the service we said we wanted in the manner we said we wanted it. I was appointed to the board last August, end of last August, and thank you again, Counselor Thompson, but at every monthly meeting, it's another deficit, and it's just not sustainable. If there hasn't been any kind of cost of living increase, if there had been, the contract would now be at $540,000 per year instead of $450,000. But even that wouldn't cover the cost of the improved services that the Bandell report wanted and the Humane Society gave us. Bandell recommended in 2007 that the city should be budgeting $891,000 annually, plus another $75,000 from licensing fees for animal control. So that's altogether $967,000, almost a million dollars a year, Bandell said, was what we needed to be spending in $2,007. The Humane Society's not looking for that amount. They're not looking for the almost one million. They're doing the job for $660,000. So that's $300,000 less than what Bandell predicted. But 660, even though it's not up at the almost million mark, is still high above the $450 we're paying now. So we're going to have to do something. The, the society is aggressively fundraising to cover the humane side of its work, but what it's falling short on is the animal control side, which is what it does under contract to the city. The investments they made have to be amortized, the operational costs arising from those investments have to be met. And the spirit of the Bandell report was recognizing the importance to our health of animal companions, encouraging the responsible keeping of animals as a desirable feature of a community, and successfully integrating animals into our community. You know, we said, yes, we like this report, we adopted it, and now we have to pay for implementing it. I'm moving, therefore, that we get a report back from staff as soon as possible on the true figure for animal control services for this budget year so that we can reflect these costs and we can reach a fair, realistic conclusion to the contract negotiations. And I'm really, really sorry to have to bring this forward at this point, but, you know, I don't, I think we have some, some more work to do yet. And I'll just remind council that Bandell also in the 2007 report said that, put out a capital budget for the construction and equipment for the, for a municipally-owned shelter, which is what we would have to do if we weren't contracting to the Humane Society. It was that $2,007, $1,946,645 excluding land and permits. So unless we can bring the contract up to a realistic level and pay for the services we're receiving, then, you know, if the Humane Society ends up going broke, we're looking at having to put $2 million into building shelter and operating it at almost a million a year. So I think this is the cheaper route, and that's my motion.
Okay, perhaps I can take that motion after I deal with the one that's on the floor for the operating budget?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't think there was...
So let me deal with the motion for the operating budget that's on the floor now. And I have to ask, does any other councillor have any other comments in regards to the operating budget and the motion that's on the floor? Counsel Diodati.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have one question. I know earlier this year, we had to close one pool temporarily and another one to refurbish it for a splash pad. My question is, the way things stand now, with we're looking at 15% increase next year, does that already include the new splash pad that we suggested we're going to do next year?
No.
It doesn't? This is, this is a little bit of my concern, and I mean, this is wonderful. I mean, I think we've got a, you know, we've got a storm that we know that we're dealing I mean, I think we've got a, you know, we've got a storm that we know that we're dealing with, and we've got a fair weather budget, and it concerns me. You know, Counselor Maves, it, I'm, we said, you pay me now or you pay me later, but you will pay me. And if you pay me later, it's going to be with interest and damages. And my concern is, we've made a lot of these commitments, and I haven't heard one solution. I heard, yeah, well, we're going to have to cut some more or find it somewhere else other than the money we've got sitting from a one-time land sale, which we're not going to have that happen again to this extent. And that concerns me, because that's our only solution. I haven't heard a solution other than hopefully the recession's going to be over, hopefully things are going to get better. Hope's not a strategy, certainly not a good strategy. And my concern is, we see what's coming, and we're pretending it's not happening. And that deeply concerns me, what's coming.
Okay. Just to those comments, I have Counselor Wing to that comment.
Yes, to that comment. I agree with Jim. We've got, we can't be deferring our infrastructure. You know, you have to maintain what you already have, or you're just deferring it till later, it's going to cost more, that's a false economy. I think what we've got to do is look at the operating budget some more, cut some more, because whatever we can cut from the operating budget saves us this year, saves us next year, saves us in 2011. Like, I'm not prepared to look at passing the operating budget anytime soon, because I think there's more cuts to be made. And I have to be careful, because I've got a conflict on one of these items. But if you look at the handout in tonight's things, City Niagara Falls, General Purposes Budget Agencies Boards and Commissions, the April 6th update, we haven't taken everybody down to zero or less than zero yet. You know, so there's still more we can do, and I want more time to look for more. And another thing I'd note is that even in some of our capital budget, there's things where this year we're getting transferred from operating. I think some of those probably need to be delayed. You know, for instance, Garner, Grassy, Brooks, a lot of that's coming from development charges, and yet there's a note saying staff have identified that full funding from development charges in 2009 for the four, two aforementioned projects will not be possible. I think we can do some cuts in the capital budget, which will mean less money will have to be transferred from the operating budget, so we can take that down again there. So I'm not anywhere near ready to look at passing an operational budget yet.
Okay. Counselor Inoni.
Thank you. And my, my motion was not to pass our budgets. So when this motion goes through, we can still look at our budgets to cut. I just wanted to make sure I was clear that we didn't understand we're passing a zero percent once we take these cuts. These cuts take us down to zero, but there's still fat in these budgets that I think that we can trim. So once the motion passed, can we continue?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Carrio.
Not too long, it's any longer, but commitments in tough economic times may have to be adjusted or changed. You know, if we knew what was going to happen today, we might not be building a new Fort Pat Arena right now. We might not have built a new community center if we know we're going to be facing these times today. So if times continue, commitments have to change. That's it. We're going to continue to talk about this. I have one more question, or do you want to just stick to what's on the motion?
Is it to the motion?
Well, if this is in the motion, it's to the motion. It's got to do with this budget. My question was, it never did get answered, who is getting more money this year than last year? I asked that question a couple of times. I looked at this, it looks like there's maybe one, maybe two groups that are still getting more this year, library being one. Is that true? Last year, they got actually three-million-six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, was that their actual last year?
Through the chair, there, you've got an updated sheet there, and going by memory, I forgot my sheet. There's only one group getting more money, that's the library at thirty-six-five. However, when you, and you approve, you know, if you approve this motion here, take twenty-eight-five off that total, so there will be, there'll be only eight thousand dollars up over last year.
More than last year?
More than last year. They will be, if you look at all that, they're the only group that's gotten more. The others are the same or less.
No. Your museums at forty-one thousand?
No, if you, if you look at museums as a whole, they're down thirteen thousand. Look at the bottom, because they've broken there individually. But if you look at, there's forty-one, yeah, three, then they're down two. So you look at in totality, the entire budget's down by thirteen thousand.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor then is to implement the further reductions in expenses that were proposed by staff that deal specifically with capital contributions to fire, roads, sidewalks, parks, and libraries that totaled the amount of four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. Are there any other questions to the motion before I call the motion? If not, then I guess I too would like to say thank you to staff. I've had the pleasure of meeting numerous times over the past few months with, in particular, Mr. Dulevik, Mr. Burden, and Mr. Harrison. It's been very pleasurable. I'd like to say that they've been, they've been very thorough and very practical in all the recommendations that they brought back to council. In the same sense, I do understand where Counselor Diodati is coming from, because I think staff share some of those concerns as well. Staff does not support cuts to infrastructure, nor do they support reserve monies being used as a band, as a Bandaid solution within our operating budget. So I think that some of the points that are made by Counselor Diodati are very valid. With that said then, I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Motion's carried. Thank you. We'll move on then to the capital budget presentation and Mr., oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Wing.
I'll make my motion. I'll make my motion now, I'd forgotten that there was the other one on the floor. So the motion is that we get a report back from staff as soon as possible on the true figure for animal control services, so that these can be reflected in our operations budget and contract negotiations can be concluded.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Do you want to make a comment?
I'll make a comment, just, first of all, I, it's rather shocking that we're listening to this, and, from you, to the clerk, did we actually approve the Bandell report? What do we stand with respect to that?
You haven't formally approved the Bandell report.
And I've been waiting for the last how many months? In fact, I volunteered my services to get involved with the Humane Society and was obviously rejected for some reason, I don't know why. That's why I asked somebody to sit there, because we have a responsibility to have a representative on that board when we're giving them four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or more. And I expected during budget time to have a lively debate and dialogue with respect to what's going on at the Humane Society. I have had a couple of positive conversations. I'm pleased with what has happened in the last six, eight months there, and I think they're doing a good job. But I think the time to come was at budget time and make a presentation like everybody else. This is when we pass a budget of a zero increase, and now we have another three-hundred or more thousand dollars to look at for the Humane Society. I'm certainly willing to look at that, and I have no negative comments to say about that at this particular time. I have always supported them, but I really think it's difficult to imagine why they wouldn't be here, why that dialogue hasn't been taking place for the last many, many months, and why at the time when we're passing the budget, do we get this surprise dropped on us? I like the Holiday Inn where there are no surprises, and this doesn't fit into that category.
Mr. Rafita.
Through the chair, a couple of things. You'll recall, hopefully, that when Counselor Thompson made a motion to cut some of the Humane Society money about two months ago, I stood up and said I thought it was premature based on the fact we hadn't negotiated a contract with the Humane Society yet. But you reduced it, which is fair, that's council's prerogative. As far as the proposed motion, I mean, if staff really had a good gauge on what the realistic costs are for those services, we would have proposed them a long time ago. We've got very differing opinions as to what's appropriate. Obviously, we have the Bandell report, which is a good touchstone to go on, but we also have other municipalities in St. Catherine's, for example. Their municipality pays a lot, pays less than what we pay, and they get more services. So it's really unfair to say what the accurate costs are. And the Bandell report also calls on increased revenue through licensing, that they're not that, the municipality who delegates that, those monies to the Humane Society aren't realizing enough in licensing funds for animals. In fairness to the Humane Society, I wouldn't say that they have dragged their feet. In fact, I would say they haven't, they've been very eager to get moving on this. In fairness to them, we felt that the change in environment there has been very positive, and we've been operating on a status quo basis because it's been positive. But I don't think they should be criticized at all. I don't think that they, they've wanted to sit down and negotiate a contract, and there was a meeting last week that unfortunately I wasn't able to attend, but I was apprised of the results, and I'm confident that we will go forward and come up with an agreement that's hopefully suitable to both parties. So I mean, I appreciate Counselor Wing's motion. I think that'll be part of the normal process of negotiating the contract with the Humane Society. And us coming back with a dollar figure, obviously, when we get to the negotiation stage, we'd apprise council, most likely in camera, on that, what we felt our flexibility was, and we'd go from there.
Okay. Mayor Salsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the clerk as well that the matter has yet to come before us, but I wanted to acknowledge the good efforts of the Humane Society and the turnaround that they've done. However, I think that that debate will take place when they make their request for funding, and I certainly can appreciate Janice Wing's concern that she sees the activity, she understands there's been a substantial change, and we have the Bandell report that we've been dealing with. And at the same time, we still have some constraints. So I don't think at this point we can make a commitment until we've seen the presentation that they're about to, I hope that they're about to make. So I hope that we can have them come forward in the next few weeks. So I think that without taking it away from their success, they have done exceptionally well. There has been a turnaround in the attitude of management, certainly in the treatment of the public as customers. We do contract for services. I have to remind council that we don't absorb their hundred percent operating costs, and we contract for a service. And I guess it's a question of what this council decides it will come forward with and the value of that fee that they, of that service that they provide for the fee. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Rafita.
Through the chair, and I appreciate the mayor bringing up that point. What you have with the Humane Society is not a grant. It's not like the museums, it's not like the library. It's a fee for service. You don't have GAMS, for example, coming to you to do a deputation at budget time. They provide our lights, right? But they're, you know, that's a contract for service. That's what Humane Society's providing. It's a contract for service. It's not a permissive grant.
Counselor Wing.
I lost my train of thought. Just to sort of confirm what has been said about the turnaround at the Humane Society, the February statistics alone, we had thirty-two cats adopted in the month of February as opposed to four the previous February. The previous year, there was about ten active volunteers. Now there's over sixty with another sixty-seven applications pending. It is like night and day, and I really encourage council to go out to the shelter and visit it and see the changes that have been made. It's amazing what's happened. I'm really excited to be a part of it, and I'm so relieved that it's all turned around so well. And what the clerk has said is absolutely right. This is a contract, and as I said before, the Humane Society is fundraising very hard to cover the humane side of its services. Where the shortfall is, is in the animal control contract. We are paying far less than what we should be paying at this point. And I just want to make sure that we have the heads up on this so that we can conclude the contract negotiations, hopefully in the near future. And yes, the Humane Society has been wanting to come in, and it took a little while to get everybody down, to sit down at the same table, but now that's underway. I'd like to see this wrap up quickly, and we really need to be cognizant of this going forward, which is why I want the staff report as soon as possible, so we know how much we have to put back in.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor that we receive a staff report back. Any other comments to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Just to go back to the operating budget for a second, council now has effectively achieved a notional tax rate, which means that we as a municipality will not be collecting any more taxes through revenues from our tax base than we did in 2008. Just a question to council, is council looking to provide direction on future cuts to our operating budget? Or are we wanting to give that direction to staff? Or are we looking to pass our operating budget? I think at some time we should be making a point, a decision, I guess, on our operating budget. If we're not going to be looking for any further cuts, then we should be getting on with it. Mayor Salsi.
Well, given that you've asked a question, Mr. Chairman, there's no response, and I should make a motion to approve the budget as submitted. The fact that council has seen the reduction to zero, we haven't had any comments further, so I'd make that motion at this point.
Okay. I have a motion by the mayor. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Yeah, can I speak to it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that, and I was holding this back for next year, but I think that the motion is appropriate to get on with doing business, so we know where we stand with respect to our budget and our spending. And if the report comes back to the, from the Humane Society, which we certainly have an obligation to be involved in, then we have sufficient funds in the five-point-seven million we can draw on if we have to. But I think we have to finally set the budget and move on, so I would second the motion.
Okay. I do have a second. I do have comments to the motion that's on the floor, and that is to approve the operating budget as is. Counselor Wing.
I think we can cut more. I think with the, you know, we need to cover the costs of the main site, and we don't know what that's going to be yet, but I think there's room for cuts in other areas of things that aren't necessary. I want to keep going.
Counselor Inoni.
Thank you. I'm not going to vote for it either, because I'd like to, I didn't bring it, because I thought we were focusing on the capital budget tonight, or I would have brought it with my own, with my own notes in it. So I asked that we defer the passing of the, defer the passing of the operational budget to the next corporate services meeting, please.
Are you putting a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay. I do have a motion to defer the passing of the operating budget for 2009. The motion is non-debatable. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Mr. Dulevik, I'm sorry, Mr. Burden.
Just a question to the motion, is there any work that the council would like us to prepare for while we wait?
That's what I was trying to get at. Mayor Salsi.
I appreciate your point, Mr. Chairman. That was the point you asked earlier, and there's no comment. So I don't know where we're going to do this, and staff has to be given some direction. If there's matters to be brought forward, it's time to discuss it now. We're discussing the budget, and it's time to bring it forward.
Perhaps we can qualify the motion for deferral.
The motion for deferral was to discuss and/or pass the operational budget at the next corporate services meeting. I understood it. I understood we were dealing with capital tonight, like Counselor Carrio, Counselor Wing. We didn't bring it, didn't bring our notes, dealt with capital until today, so that's what the deferral meant.
Okay. It was definitely on the agenda for tonight. Mayor Salsi.
I didn't bring it.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind you again, your question hasn't been answered with regard to what direction Mr. Burden is asking for direction to staff as to where we'd like to see some cuts again. So unless there's some discussion and dialogue, I'm not sure how they're going to be conveying this information to staff, so.
Okay. Counselor Wing.
Without our budgets and notes here, it's a little difficult to off the top of our head say, oh, can you look at this, that, and the other? Perhaps we can either telephone or email Mr. Burden with the areas we'd like to look at between now and the next, and the next meeting, so that he can know what it is we're considering. But, you know, we don't have that information in front of us tonight, I'm sorry.